City Council of the city of Pierceaw to be held Thursday, September sixth, twenty eighteen. The time is seven thirty. Roll call, everyone is here. We have a quorum and we've done our invocation as well as pledge of allegiance. So we will move on to item four, public hearing. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing, please. Okay, may I have a second? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously, so we will move on to the hearing, public hearing, please.
Mayor Council, same presentation. If you have any questions, if you have any time to answer questions now, then we will do it again.
I have one question. Okay, we, the last year and a half or so, we talked a lot about land use in our master plan. This is a lot of land. And have we given thought to it in terms of the master, overall master plan? How we're going to, what kind of input we're gonna give, what we're looking at?
Well, two things that we have talked about particularly. One, our big tract of land that we own out there, that's taking land right now, that pulls it in for national parks to do it. Because if you give them that, that land will now be, you know, we can plan the use of that land accordingly. Of course, we know that land is gonna take a lot of work, but for something to happen out there or whatever, that pulls it in. But the second thing it does is, you know, when people get off the interstate and they come down that interstate that the 104 coming in, they don't realize that they're, you know, two miles down the road, three miles down the road from actually getting to Pierceaw. They think all that out there is part of Pierceaw too. Right now, we really have no control over a lot of what happens out there. You know, there's no zoning, there's no, there's no anything out there. So it gives us a little bit more control on one of our entrances to town. It allows it now, our citizens only, where they're actually gonna review their decisions. And it sort of gives us a little bit more control on that, on that opening phase where everybody comes in and they can actually start to see where our help is. So from the master plan standpoint, it's big to get all this that we've done and get it included in our city planning, how we're gonna develop housing. Now, we've got a big chunk out there, it could be a housing area, it could be an industrial area, it could be something else, and that fits in. Fits it very well because we were a little having space right now that we can do a lot of that stuff. So it allows us a lot more flexibility that time as to how we're gonna establish, how you guys are gonna establish priorities for where we want to go, where we want stuff to go from this point forward.
Are you gonna be allowing like controlled boroughs out there? Because I know some of these people do burn their trash out there and brush and, you know, so on and so forth. How are you gonna, how are you gonna address that issue?
So the existing ordinances don't allow for, you know, they don't allow for burns. But it requires that they utilize the city, solid waste company. So once, once they're annexed, those ordinances will apply to them too.
Okay.
Go ahead. That property that we have out there, half of it is useless, right?
No, it's barbed, it's not barbed yet.
Yeah, but the front part, how much, how much area?
There's probably about twenty or twenty-five acres that is usable. It just needs to be cleared with the brush, I mean, it's covered in brush, but it's, I mean, it's solid, it's solid property up against power plant road. So, I mean, that is right there at the 104, I mean, there could be a lot of stuff done with that, that piece of property right there. And so we've got extending a lot of the rest away from that property where there's access. We have a waterman, all the way, the big waterman right there, extend that to rest, you know, there's a lot of opportunity that we can actually. But we don't, the city owned it before, so if we would've developed something out there, we would've got a property tax off of it because it was an annex inside the city limits. So being able to develop it and get property tax off of these things, we have to get it, we'd have to get it in which it is now. But that was one of the things, I'm not sure, even though that piece of property was detached. So we could've sold it, or we could've leased it and done something with it. We actually tried to work out a lease on that about a year ago for another, like, jail type facility. They were looking for a place to build another facility. But if, if we sold it and somebody built a Honda plant out there, we would've got another one selling price out of that, it would've been eight, because it kind of would've gotten taxed off of it. Just like I said, what was.
Yes, sir.
So right now, the city limits is up to Bond Road, is that correct?
It's right there at Paulson. But has it been thirty days since Phase Two was finished? I don't think we've been quite thirty days, the one that exists.
But in terms of roads, is it along Bond Road, pretty much?
Once Phase Two, since Phase One and Phase Two are finalizing right now, the city limit will actually go right there to the road that goes to Steph, like County Road ten fifty-eight or whatever it is, that would be the city limit right there.
But it does not include Horizon West, right?
No, it does not, no.
Yeah. That's what I'm asking, is there's, there's a plot of land between Bond Road and this, right?
Correct, yes, that is correct. All the way to that line right there, actually all the way to that south line on Steph. And I think you see Horizon West.
That's what you was asking.
Horizon West is right. Horizon West is right.
Right there, right there.
And it is not included.
Goes through water, you're in a, on power plant.
Water, okay.
Yeah, stops in water, but it starts, it was starting at the same, right now, it was starting at the city property number. Because that's, I'm not.
Is it true that the boundary is, it's like the alleyway there?
The alleyway where?
Between power plant and the next street?
Yeah, it's the alleyway behind Wahiyo.
Behind Wahiyo, huh?
Between Wahiyo and Moore. It's the alley. So here, on that side of the alley, county, it's here.
So you can go inside the alley and shoot fireworks.
If you need time to do property management, you should try to use no straight heights, so it's normally roads and alleys, is what you're gonna do. And then those alleyways become, okay, which is, is it half, half the city and half the county, usually, whatever you know.
And the house is the city.
So if it's a pay, if it's a pay road, you're gonna make sure you stay on the right way on one side so it's very clear. Alleyways, there's no, if it's an alley, there's no designation of one side. Then we do have a few alleys that are counters.
Mayor Mayor? We are, it is a public, an open hearing, so if there's anybody that would like to ask questions or say anything, or any, any comments from the floor, be welcome.
Okay. Since there's no more, yes, Uche?
I just wanted to add, with respect to your question, well, your concern earlier, without even service track for land, twenty years, five years down the line, that is a thing what the comprehensive plan is supposed to address, you know? Because it has to look at the whole site politically and project it into the future. But my concern is, some people, like Mr. Jackson, say, you know, they are saying they may not want some of these. They may want some of these. So when you wanna plan with that in mind, you know, it makes it inconclusive, you know? So if you're planning for a city with projections that, okay, over time, this place is still gonna, you know, this place is gonna be left as agricultural land, whatever, you know? So that one left at open space, you're not gonna be looking at putting utilities. But if there's, you know, possibly people are gonna live there, it may be worthwhile looking towards servicing that area or providing for the service for that area. But it's something that we need to look at politically.
Thank you. Any else, anybody else who comments, questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
All in favor? It's now closed, the time is seven forty. Moving on to item five, new business. A, discussion and possible action regarding the waiver fees for the use of the Victor Torino Sports Complex for fundraiser. This is an action item, we need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
Second? All in favor?
Mayor Mayor Council, this is something a couple of councilors asked about after the last meeting. And I'm gonna let Justin tell you guys what they are asking for, and I'll give you some comments after that. For what, whatever, whatever you want to talk.
We're just trying to raise money for a little cousin here, she's trying to get to London, to cheer, to march in a parade in London. Just wanna represent, not only did it for Pierceaw, and the county, and the message she's wanting to convey. So we can waive about the whole seven hundred, maybe some of it, just so you can have money to Pierceaw up to London.
So you'll be marching in a band or a cheer?
It's over, cheerleaders on all fronts, like the nation. You try out to be an all-American, BCA cheerleader, and you travel to London and you cheer in the New Year's Day parade. It'll be with a whole bunch of cheerleaders and fans or whatever.
Okay.
So what is your fundraiser gonna be?
The softball tournament. Okay.
Um, believe me, my name is Jayla, I'm a junior cheerleader at L D High School, and I was one of the few cheerleaders selected to participate in the New Year's Day parade in London. I would be performing alongside elite cheerleaders from all around the country. I'm trying to raise money to help fund this trip. My family has stepped in to organize a softball such baseball fundraiser to number ten in Pierceaw. I would like to request a generous donation on behalf of the city of Pierceaw for the use of the sports complex at little to no cost to me. This donation would alleviate additional expenses that will allow me to apply all money raised to my trip. I would like to extend my greatest appreciation, appreciation in advance to the city of Pierceaw for their time of consideration.
Thank you. So the option is to, the fee is how much, seven hundred?
Seven hundred dollars.
Seven hundred dollars.
Well, well, I don't know, because my reasonable understanding is it's one day, but now Ram said he's running it to two day, we don't have an application for term.
Well, I have, I'm not submitted the application until we find out what we're gonna pay. We have to, I think, write something for the other, the other deposit plus, and we're gonna use all four fields. It's six hundred dollars plus a hundred and some dollars more for the right. Plus, I have to pay for a team crew coming to pick up the park, to go out for. So that's an extra five, I can only hundred dollars, two hundred dollars on top of the seven hundred?
Well, it's a probable cleanup deposit of a hundred dollars, so if you guys pick it up and get that back.
We're not trying to get the whole thing, acres, trying to get some of the way so she can have some money to go get herself to London.
Okay, so you're.
So I need to make a few comments. So in twenty seventeen, last year, council passed the ordinance of establishing speed. But the reason the council passed the ordinance of establishing speed was because the way the tournaments were being done previously almost had city problems. I think it's important that we understand all the facts about this before you guys make a decision. So you guys looked at three options that our, our director gave you as a council for what the fees would be. At that time, if you remember, we were still trying to figure out the lighting, because we had all these different numbers installed. We had NG, the power company here, and they gave us three different sets of numbers, and so we had three different options. You guys selected a power option, which then defaulted to the option that you selected here because it was that, that fee, that power option fee that went into the fees that you guys established. One of the things that I had great concern about with this is the fact that, how many teams did you guys work with?
Today, I think he's got, I think it's like fifteen, sixteen.
And how much has he taken of the money that he paid?
I think he said it was like sixty percent of the team's money that he took. On that, he's giving us the order, giving us the concession center, and then he's giving us, I guess, forty percent or forty-five percent of the earnings. Sixty-five or forty-five, almost, I mean, it was just like, it was supposed to be for the Knights of Columbus, and the Knights of Columbus. So that tournament was too quick, we told it within a week or so. And it's kind of hard for us to go and get all this stuff together. But I did, I picked it up myself, and she asked me if we can give her fundraisers, or if we can give her the number, and I said, well, fine. And I'll take a little day to do it, to go to the city of Pierceaw.
So the, 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 whatever you wanna call it, the person that's putting the tournament together is gonna take sixty-five percent of money, and how much of this fee has he paid?
He's actually had sixty-five percent of the earnings. He's gotta pay the rings, he's gotta pay the medals, he's gotta pay plaques, he's gotta pay umpires. So he, I don't know how much money he can make in the end.
Okay, but the rental fee he's pushing off on you, right?
He's pushing all of it on me, insurance, and, or, I don't know about insurance, but the rental fee, that's coming on me.
So that one you guys understand?
So that's why I brought this up to the city council, because I think it's ridiculous having to pay seven hundred dollars. I mean, having to do a fundraiser for a kid that's trying to get some, to London. There's other organizations out in this, in this community that Ram waves a couple of fees for when they want to have a fundraiser at the park. And I'm, that's, I'm a knife myself, and he waves the fees for us, just to have a fundraiser there. And that's what I brought up to the city members later on Friday. And it's not like, I mean, I know the nice of the money, but we do help the community, I mean, the community, so.
Previously, you guys have the waiver, the sponsorship part, which, what you mean, is what we did, we did away with the sponsorship part because the lights haven't happened, the mitigation loads, the cost and all that. And you guys have approved how the city would do sponsorships. Related to, if it's a school or if it's a nonprofit or whatever. But we don't have anything in place for that right now, for the school to not profit either. But it's your choice.
Questions? Yes.
Why doesn't the promoter actually provide the insurance and provide for the fee for the, take it off his sixty-five percent? Or sixty percent?
I don't know if we're gonna use this or insurance for the use of the field, just in case a girl or a boy gets hurt during the tournament. I don't know if we're using his insurance, he's gonna fall back on his insurance, because he told me that there was an insurance on fire that we can use. I don't know if it's his or.
When it's, when is the tournament?
It should be this Sunday. But see, he just told me that he should, like, last week. So he came to shorten all this, from getting this tournament, put, I mean, putting it together just to post it for her to get to London. I mean, it's just like, a couple of days, you're gonna get all this together and come, sign up here and funny, I'm gonna ask y'all for a discount on the field.
And your trip to London is?
I mean, I think one other thing too, as of today, the fields are too wet, so depending on the weather, that's gonna be a whole other.
See, that's what he also told me to go, if we didn't make it this weekend, I guess he's got it for the twenty-third as well.
Oh, okay, I hadn't heard that. For this weekend, it's supposed to rain again tomorrow, it's supposed to rain again Saturday, it's supposed to rain again Sunday, so.
So, I mean, I knew the rain all this week, so if I can have it on the twenty-third, it'd be nice.
That's, that's a possibility to, to make a lot of money, I guess, as long as.
It's, it's a total of seven hundred?
No, how much money, how much money is it that you need to, or you're trying to raise?
Thirty-seven hundred dollars. Always expensive for these girls.
And she's going in December twenty-sixth, moving to January second, that's what she's doing.
Yes, sir.
And this tournament is gonna be like all day, all night, I mean, not all night.
It's gonna be all day, I don't know about all night. Usually when you have tournaments, they do that, it's about nine, eleven, thirty.
Eighteen to twenty-two, they'll take all day, you know?
And do you know more or less how much money you could earn with one of these fundraisers?
See, we have, when we did ours, the Knights of Columbus, I think, with just the concession center and the door, we were maybe like twenty, four hundred dollars, twenty-three hundred dollars. But that's not including what he, we took out this part on the sixty-five percent. But the teams earned, whatever was left from where he gave us, which was probably like eight hundred, nine hundred dollars, left from what the teams paid to give it.
So you have the potential to raise at least seventy-five percent of the money?
To get it to London.
Is, is that the protocol, and is how the, this is how the, that their broker lined that up and broker gets?
This is why you guys passed the ordinance, because of that, because we were getting in trouble because of that. Because that person using a public facility, big one, not for a nonprofit or not for something, but for personal business.
That was for the auditors. That was the only issue that the auditors had that.
When the Knights of Columbus do it, they're not, they're not, I mean, so that's a whole different ballgame, because if it's Knights of Columbus, or if it's a school softball team, the, the little league, whoever, that's a whole different thing, because they're not profitable to five-one C three. And so government, government, if you're government to five-one C three, that's, that's not the issue. It's when, when it's being used, what was happening before was it was being used by private individuals to make a lot of money, and we got a lot of trouble with the auditors, and that's why you guys stopped it in twenty seventeen with the fees.
This is the same thing?
Again, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what all that worked out, and just, I mean, I just wanted you guys to understand what the whole dynamic was that you were considering this.
Well, it is, it is, from my perspective, if it's, you know, the young girl from our county go, that's an easy decision, but it sound like more than that. If, if somebody's taking advantage of the situation, you know, where, where if that person was paying the fees out of his butt and they giving you guys the net, that would, that'd be a pretty easy decision. But I guess, I guess I'm kind of against a wall against that. Do you guys see it that way? If the promoter's the one that's gonna get all the goodie, and then he's asking the guys to, to, to. And the other part of the equation is, because there is expenses, so, I mean, that, we had to feed a little bit high, so we can drop that down to make it more in line with everybody else. But it does cost to do that, and so we try to get it in line where it basically covers our costs.
And we set this up, I don't know if you, that's, I mean, that's basically what we were trying to do. We're trying to make money on sports softball, we're trying to help cover the cost of it.
I have a question. Justin, so how much do you think you're gonna generate from that, that particular event? If, if, I mean, taking off what, what your broker and all that, taking everything off, how much would you possibly tend to make?
I mean, not much, because we still gotta buy the drink wise, drink wise, and all that out of our pocket.
So maybe two thousand?
So, so wouldn't it be better, Justin, to ask the council for a donation rather than the field?
That's fine, we can do that.
Can we do that?
Yes, this is, we could do that. Our, our pockets, not your taxes. Yes, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's not, that's not a problem, because I know he's taking a good chunk of the money, he's pocketed it, so.
How many, how many kids are going to home? From, from, yeah.
It's, there's some from Pierceaw, there's two of.
Why, why can't we do the tournament that the city runs for all of them, give them all the money?
Yes.
Let's do it.
Let's do it, give them all the money.
All the money that comes in goes to the kids, and it doesn't go to all the suburbs and my parents. That's what we should be doing.
What exactly does, did you say it's cavazos? What exactly does he, does he do?
All he does is recruit teams, he puts the tournament together, he buys the rings, the medals, and the plaques to give up. And, I mean, it comes out of his pocket, of course, and then that's how he gives his money back, is with the team's entry fee. He'll pay himself back, and then once that, he'll give to the person that's, that's booked and holds the turn.
And do we know how to recruit teams?
And how much are the rings, do you know?
What do you all think about that?
And that's only for the winning team, right?
The rings, the rings go for the winning team, plus the plaque goes to the, the team as well.
They get one plaque.
A one plaque and individual rings.
Each individual gets a ring, and then they get a plaque, and then second place will get a medal and a plaque. But we did, because I'm an organization for the Lady Mash, and we did it last year, we gave out rings. And I think for a set of twelve rings, it was like eight hundred dollars.
And you recruited the teams?
And we recruited the team to go.
And we'll help, we'd be happy to help.
See, but like, since it was a short notice, that's why he.
The prize is such a.
We go to the twenty-third, or even if we push off another month, where we have a little bit more time for you and Ram to work together, we should do that, right?
There's some money due at certain times. So ours is October first, fifteen hundred dollars per child is due, so that's why we were trying to do it.
So the twenty-third is the work?
Twenty-third is the work, but this month.
I don't know if it's the same for the Pierceaw.
Yes, it is, it is.
Do we know how many kids told them?
I know from, from the year, there, I think it's like.
Three or four.
Two from, two from, three from Pierceaw, I think that's what I heard.
There's five from Dilly, five from.
There's five from Dilly, so that's probably.
Sold them like nine or eight.
But if the full funds sold up, the kids, instead of, they're all gonna be better off.
So that, you, thirty-seven hundred is what's needed?
For each, each kid.
So that'd be about sixteen thousand?
And then how much is entry fee per team?
It's usually, it depends, like, for eight year, you charge one twenty-five, and then as it goes up, like twelve years, another one seventy-five. When you go to eighteen year, which is like two hundred, two twenty-five a team.
But then you still have the concession, and you still have the gate.
And then you have the gate. But that's, I mean, like umpire, the umpire wise, I don't know, I wanna do, you wanna pay them out of the money they're earning, or you want the? The way we did it, we had the teams pay the umpires, instead of us, I mean, paying out of our pocket, the teams, we charged them.
They pay per game?
Yeah, they pay per game, it's twenty-five dollars for full games, and then thirty-five for break.
I think we, we need to, say, and you all get more money.
And if, if all the kids wanna participate, great, because some of them already earned their money and they don't want to, fine. But we're doing it for a whole of real county kids that way, and it's a one-time shot, that's, I mean, that's within, that's a whole lot. Because the reality is too, we can do this with this, and then every other kid that's gone, I think, they're gonna ask for the same thing. And what are you gonna tell them, you gonna say yes for them?
Is Dilly helping at all, or donating anything at all to the city of, of Dilly?
They haven't asked.
Oh, they haven't asked.
They haven't asked, because I came directly here, since I live here, and I wanted to, the conflict here is a lot better than the Dilly one.
So just so happens, with the new incoming city manager, Dilly is in February, and so I will see if I can get them to split councils.
Maybe we can get the county involved.
I bet I can, I bet I can get the city of Dilly to split councils, since such a Dilly.
County would love. Yes.
We can try and make it work out, but on the twenty-third.
On the twenty-third, yes, on the twenty-third, two days east.
Yes, Sonia.
I'm, I'm four ages.
Just as long as we can get her to.
As long as we can get her.
So this money's gonna go to her?
To the kids.
To the kids, up to the group of the children that are gonna participate.
Whatever it is, participate and help them set it up and have the work that way there.
They would, you would need to get your group to come forward and disclose who's in at the beginning.
So can, can you guys take care of that? Can you take care of getting a hold of the, the Dilly kids, the Pierceaw kids, give me a list of names?
The Pierceaw kids, if it works at the school district, we'll probably find out.
I can get the Pierceaw place, I saw Angie Dorder, of course. I know the Pierceaw kids.
Oh, yeah, the Shaefer girl, if we can.
I don't know, I don't know, we can get the team together, you go down tomorrow, or you have to go back?
I don't know, I'll wait, if you're ready, I'll be in the morning.
If you guys can come in, maybe tomorrow, we'll get Ram in, and we'll start.
So it's five here?
There's five from Pierceaw and five from Dilly?
Yes. Maybe Pierceaw is. Okay, maybe. We'll find out who's going where.
Which in reality is, is a good call, I mean, you don't have, you don't have to give rings, or, I mean, you can give different stuff, all right?
The way, the way you talk to the teams, tell them why we're doing, you know, and say, this is what we're gonna, this is what we're gonna have for you, is that, you know, it definitely does.
As far as the entrance is concerned, well, they'll follow their team.
So the city, the city sponsors, city insurance company, that's already governed, the city sponsors. So this will be the city sponsoring, so your, your, your discussion item wants to waive your fees, so you can.
Direct.
Yeah, yeah, you could, you can make motions to not waive fees, but. Grant staff to, to, to run the tournament.
The only thing, the only thing that they really ask for is to have, like, diggers and maintain more water, and they have, after every game, probably four each game.
Have what?
Maintain more water, like, with ice and water, we could.
Oh, containers of water, okay.
Because you would lose a lot of money with them bringing in ice, just with the waters and the injuries.
Not weigh anything else, I want beside water, that's why the concessions stand, a lot of the concessions stand, and we'll, we'll make sure we take care of that. Don't outside, don't outside of the tree.
Because we'll be busy that day.
Yes, and it's not working, we'll make it work.
Oh, that, yeah, who's, so who's gonna work it?
We'll take care of the concession stand.
You guys, you have the, who asked the parents to write?
Other...
They'll take care of the run of the concession stand and the gate. We'll take, we give...
The only thing that we ask for, that we had trouble with, when we did ours, was a lot of parents had thrown themselves at us, not, I would tell them, well, if you're my kid, what if we dehydrate, we have water in it, and they're not sure, that's all. The only thing we want is a patrol to be there, just in case we actually have that.
Do you think that would be, okay?
People take care of that, it's a big issue with parents and the guy on the gate.
The food items for the concession stand, you get, you guys purchase? Like, you sell chips, what do you sell at?
We, we did, we sold like a...
Frito pies and...
It was like a burger, chips, and a drink for like six dollars. And then the rest was like Frito pie, popcorn, pickles, candy, and the air is water and so on.
Typical.
I mean, if we need to provide anything for the concession stand, I can talk to the parents as well, and see if they can donate anything towards that.
So, so the only issue, then, of course, is the gate. Now, she'll be there, we'll have to have one of our staff members who's bonded to take money, that's the only deal, we can get others to play, so we can cover that. And then they can take care of the concession stands, parks people take care of the fields. All we've got to do is get us together with Ram and the teams, and figure out why this is going to not, we do that talk.